February 27th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who is audio or video recording? If you would just raise your hand and indicate so. And I see none. All right, selectmen's comments, Mr. Ward?
I'd just like to remind everyone that if you're interested in running for town office, you still have two weeks from today to get your nomination papers in. All you need to do is pick up the papers at the town clerk's office, and you only need 35 registered voters to sign your papers. So if you're interested, now's the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
None at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Lapointe?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing at this time. Actually, I do. Special town meeting coming up, two weeks from tonight, March 13th, 2023, 7:00 PM at the Murdoch Middle High School in the auditorium. A fairly short warrant, some very important items on there, so I urge everyone to please make a point to come out to the, to the special town meeting on March 13th. Do we have any public comments or announcements this evening? Seeing and hearing none. We do have one public hearing before us this evening, Mr. Ward?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Winchandon, February 8th, 2023. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing is scheduled to be held by the Board of Selectment of the Town of Winchandon, Massachusetts, on the 27th day of February at 6:30 PM in the second floor auditorium of the Winchandon Town Hall 109 Front Street, upon the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way: Second Street, National Grid to install one joint-owned pole on Second Street beginning at a point approximately 650 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Second Street and West Menominee Road. Install one pole on Second Street for new service and to relieve sag from long span. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as necessary may be found necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Second Street, Winchandon, Massachusetts, Plan Number 30689495 dated January 4, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Any comments, questions, or concerns can be forwarded to the Board of Selectment prior to the meeting by mailing the selectmen at 109 Front Street, Department 1, Winchandon, Mass. 01475, by email at mcallandrella@townofwinchandon.com, or by calling the office at 978-297-0085. Signed, Mary Calandrella, Executive Assistant for the Winchandon Board of Selectmen.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Anderson? I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the poll petition on Second Street.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The public hearing is open. Good evening. Just for the record, if you would state your name, please.
My name is Will Fontaine.
Thank you, and you're with National Grid?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We do have a diagram for the proposed poll. We did, in your packet, there is a letter from Public Works Director Brian Kroto, who has looked it over and finds the plan acceptable. Any questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Anderson?
I would just question, that particular area, that road is very, very narrow. And if you went up there to, you know, with one of those big utility trucks that take a pole down, I'm assuming you would block the road?
Not entirely. That point kind of widens up right there. When I went up there, they were building the house that's going to be serviced by this pole, and it widens up a little bit right at that point. In fact, they had a dumpster there where we wanted to put, where we want to put the pole for a while. So there should be enough room for, for, you know, one lane traffic to go through there.
Alongside the truck while you're working?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? I note that the abutters were notified, and the ad was placed in the Gardner News. Are there any abutters or anyone in the audience that has a question or comment? I see and hear none.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Anderson?
I make a motion to close the public hearing for the poll petition on Second Street.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The public hearing is closed. Any further discussion? If none, when we're ready, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the poll petition to install one joint-owned pole on Second Street as presented this evening.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve the petition. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could scan it over to him.
Okay, so we can sign that after the meeting.
Thanks, coming in.
Thank you. Next up, we have appointments and resignations. Good evening, sir. Starting with an appointment to the Recreation Commission, Andrew Bové. How are you?
Good evening. I'm great. How are you?
Very good, thank you. So tell us what prompted you to throw your hat in the ring.
Yeah, so I've always been interested in public service, and I felt this was a great opportunity that it came up, and I met with Tiffany, and we discussed what it would entail, and I felt that I could lend my, my skills and my services to the town.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? I do see that you have the approval of the Recreation Commission, which is fantastic. Questions, comments?
Just want to thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Anything further? Nope. Thank you. If there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to appoint Andrew Bové to the Recreation Commission for a three-year term, I believe. This is a three-year term? Yes.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, I will just want to read into the record, we do still have several vacancies open throughout our committees and commissions. Communications Committee, we have two vacancies. They help in expanding local access programming and the communications within the residents of the community. The Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee, is that still, is that still active? Okay. We have one citizen vacancy. They're working on the pros and cons of the Community Preservation Act. Cultural Council, there are 14 vacancies. They do a lot of community-based projects, the arts, humanities, and sciences. We have a field viewer fence, fence viewer field driver, one vacancy, under the animal control bylaw. Master Plan Implementation Committee, we have one vacancy. And that can be any resident. Open Space Preservation Appraisal and/or Survey Revolving Fund Advisory Committee, one Board of Selectmen-appointed vacancy. I will volunteer for that so we can get it off the list.
Okay.
Oh, I would make a motion, I would make a motion to appoint Audrey Labrie to the Open Space Preservation Appraisal and/or Survey Revolving Fund Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Recreation Committee, Commission, we have three vacancies. Looking for some student participation, participants.
Madam Chair, do we still have three?
Has that changed? Ms. News?
Hello. There's actually only one vacancy. There's only been two on there for a while, so I'm not sure how it got to three. And with Andrew, we now just have one left.
Okay.
And we are completely full for students.
So, and I'm sorry, that one vacancy is for a student?
No.
No?
No, we're full with students.
Oh, that's, oh, very good. That's good. Okay.
If I could clarify while we still have you, with your upcoming bylaw change, is that vacancy amount going to change?
So with the current bylaw, that will be proposed at special town meeting on March 13th with the merging of committees. I was speaking with Justin, and I think we have more members than seats that are going to be available at the time of creating the bylaw. That was not the case. We would still have had vacancies, but we've had a lot of interest recently on both committees. So I think we agreed that everyone who would like to remain on the committee, some people will be stepping down, they have other priorities, and they're going to step off. But if, especially if the number is more than seats, that everyone will resubmit their letters of interest, and we'll have to go from there because we currently have more students than the new bylaw allows to. So we'll have to do some rearranging.
That's a, not that it's not a problem, but it's a nice situation to be in, that you have more people than you have seats.
Much better than it's been in the past, so that's great.
That's fantastic. It shows that there's getting some interest in town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially the students. Yeah, nice.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And zoning Board of Appeals, we have two alternate member vacancies. They hold public hearings and applications. People are questioning building permits or such. So if you have any interest in those positions, you know, please reach out either to the town manager's office, or I believe there's a link on the website. You can get more information if you need it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I know the Board of Selectmen doesn't appoint this one, but there is still an opening on the town's Finance Committee, appointed by the town moderator. If you have any experience in finance, whatever level, send a letter or an email of your interest to either town moderator Corr. Grotto or to the town manager's office. And it's a pretty important committee, so if you want to know how the finances work in town, that's the committee to get on.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right, we have permit license applications, pardon me. We do have one solicitation, hawker peddler permit from Trinity Solar, Reed Smith.
Madam Chair, he had car problems. He did come in about 10 after 6:00, and he wasn't sure if he'd make it back. But we did run this by all the boards, committee, I mean, the department heads, everything was clear. More importantly, the police department is well aware of it, and he will check in with them as, because he is a door-to-door. We are still waiting for his return of the quarry check, so the permit won't be released until it's paid and the quarry check comes back. But as you can see, attached is the state permit, so they do have to get state permitting as well to do a peddler's license, is what it's listed as.
And it's good, January 2023 to January 2024. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, this is Reed. You can have a seat, Reed. We were just talking about it. I just told him that he had a car issue. You can have a seat here in case you have any questions.
Perfect timing.
It was.
Good, good.
So the, no motions, I'm sorry, no issues with department heads? So let's see, Mr. Smith. So when would you be looking to start that three-month period?
So let's see, my permit for Athol runs up on the 6ths, but I'm sort of done helping out people there. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you can pull the mic towards you.
Sort of done helping people in Athol for right now. You know, I've been there for three months. So, I mean, I could start, you know, as soon as possible, really. But it's really, you know, whatever, whatever procedures need to go through.
Okay.
So yeah, it's, I've been in Athol for the past three months. You know, it's, it's really straightforward. It's a, it's a no-cost solar program because of state and federal incentives, and I'm just going around talking to people about that and seeing if they can qualify. That's about it.
Okay, and you're looking at Tuesday through Friday?
Yeah, we work Saturdays too. Do you guys, oh yeah, you're checking the hours.
Yeah, it's on there, 10 to 5. I think in the past, we've used the word dusk in the permits that we've issued. So we're just concerned with people, you know, having someone, a stranger knock on the door after dark.
Okay. I mean, I keep lights on me, and, but whatever is clever for you guys.
Okay, thank you. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I prefer, Madam Chair, I prefer to keep the dusk deadline. I know soon enough it'll be 7:00 before it starts to get dark, but
Sure.
people get very nervous.
Yeah, no, it's understandable.
Okay. So we would be looking for Tuesday through Friday, 1:00 PM to dusk, and then Saturday, 10 to 5. It's still light out at 5:00 at this point. Would that be acceptable?
What's that?
Tuesday through Friday, 1:00 PM to dusk, and then Saturday, 10 to 5.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any further questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Lapointe?
I would make a motion to approve the peddler's license to Trinity Solar Company for Reed Smith for three months, door-to-door, pending the successful quarry check.
With the amended hours?
With the amended hours, my apologies.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
You're all set. I'll get in touch with you.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we have a request for a vitriol's license from Lady Fit Nutrition. Good evening. So tell us what you've got going on up there.
All right, so the mission is to bring healthier.
I'm sorry, for the record, you're, state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Veronica Cruz. So the mission is to pretty much bring healthier options into the city. So the business is herbalife-based, so there I will be serving protein smoothies, all types of, like, all different flavors, and then energizing teas that I gave everybody a sample of. If you didn't get one, let me know. I'll give you one. And then it'll give you energy with a whole bunch of benefits, vitamins and minerals and stuff like that, just for your overall health.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this would be in the location of the former Hometown Diner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, right in the corner there. That's a pretty busy corner. Got some information on you. Oh, looks nice. If you would please, Mr. Saltback, yes. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
So I see you're opening at 5:00 AM?
Yes. So it'll be a split schedule, so I'll do 5:00 to 7:00 in the morning for like breakfast and people that are out in the morning, and then I'll close out and then come back at 11:00 till 4:00.
Okay, so you're, you're counting on the people heading to work?
Yes.
In the morning, okay?
Yes.
Madam Chair, could I just ask, so along those lines, they might go get a shake or, or one of your energy teas instead of a cup of coffee?
Yes. Yes. So it's pretty much breakfast or lunch or dinner. You can use it as any meal. The shakes right there, where it says protein smoothie, that's a meal replacement. So it's like if you sat down and ate a full breakfast, and then the energy tea is pretty much a coffee, but with no sugar, with less sugar, I should say, because it does have about like five grams of sugar, but with less sugar and benefits for digestive health, boost metabolism, B12 vitamins, and it has up to 165 milligrams of caffeine.
And what does that mean to me exactly, like, compared to a cup of coffee? I'm curious.
So the cup of coffee is a lot of sugar, so where
No, I have none.
Huh?
I have no sugar. We'll just leave your sugar out.
Okay, so no sugar. So it's about the same thing. If you like energy or if you like coffee, we just have more benefits to coffee. Like we have vitamin A, vitamin B, vitamin C. We got stuff for hair, skin, and nail, hair, skin, and nails. We have vitamins that benefit your body versus a coffee is just black coffee. You know what I mean? Or it's black coffee with caramel, and it doesn't have vitamins for your body that your body needs on a regular basis for energy and for just your skin in general, or your body in general. Okay.
So would 165 milligram of caffeine, is that like a Starbucks dark?
No, 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 no. They're all sweet.
Duncan's Light?
Oh, I see where you're going. You're trying to compare it. So I would say it would be like a dark coffee, per se. They don't taste like it, but it's, through the doctors, you're good for 200 milligrams a day, but yeah, it's like a dark coffee.
Okay, just trying to get a sense of how strong, how much caffeine.
It's strong, but it's not like, so it's strong caffeine, but it's not gonna give you like a crash where you're like boost of energy, and then you just crash on the floor or whatever.
Tipple caffeine.
You just, nope, it's a smooth sail. You get the rush of having energy, and then it kind of just comes down at a natural state. It doesn't just crash you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the, from the board?
It looks very interesting.
Check it out. It's really good. Try the samples. They're good.
Just to confirm, you just mentioned, when you're talking about your hours, on the application, it says Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yes.
No, beg your pardon, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM.
Yes.
So three days a week, you'll be open in the morning.
Yep.
And then Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you'd be open in the afternoon, 11 to 4, because you said, I'm sorry, 12 to 4, because you said 11 before.
It is 11 to 4. I don't know why it's there, but that is
It would be from 11 to 4 in the afternoon. Okay. And closed on Wednesdays and Sundays.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, before you go to that baseball game or something, you know?
Yeah.
Those are probably good hours on a Saturday. Or the swim meet or whatever it is you're doing.
Whatever kid activity you're being dragged to.
And you're exhausted. You need something.
You need the energy to stay up, and you need to stay full because they're long. I get it. Come through.
One after the other. Do I, do I, has the health inspector?
Yes, she's going, she's due to go for the board of health, the food permit and everything on Monday night, so. I told her it was
Next Monday night?
Yes, this coming Monday, yep.
Okay.
She does already have a business certificate. She's just gone through the process.
Yes.
Yep, that I see. All right. Anything further from the Board of Selectmen?
Just good luck.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you, thank you. I'm excited too. There's nothing over here.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the common vitriol license for Lady Fit Nutrition with the hour, afternoon hours amended to read 11 to 4, and pending final sign-off from the health inspector. Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Best of luck.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And one other, we have an entertainment permit, the amphitheater summer season of events. Welcome again.
Hello.
So let's see. No particular issues other than from Chief Walski, just, you know, the details as discussed. And would you go back up to the dates, please? Just so we're looking at, are these all Saturdays or Fridays or?
All except, all except September 15th. That's a Friday.
Okay. So it would be Saturday evenings, two in July, two in August, and then three Saturdays and one Friday in September. 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM each night, okay? I saw your lineup. You put something on social media.
Yeah.
But I haven't
If you keep scrolling, it goes down there.
Oh.
Keep scrolling.
Keep going.
There it is.
I did see, in conjunction to putting this on social media, there are some comments about the fact that there were ticket sales.
Correct.
What are you thinking of for the cost of tickets and such?
So the costs have been calculated based on the cost of each performance, which vary, so
A little bit louder, sorry.
I'm sorry. They're based on the cost of how much we had to pay to get the performers there. So the first one on July 8th is the most expensive one. It would be $25. Most of them fall within the $20 range. The comedy show is $15, and two of the other acts are $10. So Whiskey Johnson and the Green Sisters, the last two of the season, are $10 each. And we are going to offer a season ticket for $120, and you can come to every event. It's $20 cheaper than if you bought them all individually. And that, that's what we had worked out for cost.
I guess in my mind, I realize there's a cost to getting people to come in like this. What about just free events for the town?
So we still are offering our summer concert series, which I think the entertainment permit has already come at Gar Park.
Right, at the G.I. Park, but how about the
And we have, yeah, we have a few performances happening in conjunction with our free community days each month that we have going on there. And we are just working on also getting the Winchin Music Festival to bring in an orchestra that they have been trying to bring to town, but they didn't have the space anywhere else to bring them. The date hasn't quite been set. Sometime in August, they're looking to come in, and that will be free to the public. So we are working on getting other free performances at the amphitheater as well throughout the season.
Okay, yeah, I think as, as gray as it should go to a concert there, to be able to attend a community event is just as important. So that's good to hear. Okay.
Yes, we're trying to make in a nice mix of things that are paid and things that are also free to the community. Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, before I lose the thought, one more thing. All the sponsorships. Do you see the potential of perhaps building up enough sponsorships that that can help offset the costs of bringing in some of these bands? And thereby either, you know, reducing the costs to the public?
Yes, so this season, obviously, all our sponsorships that we had solicited are specifically for the grand opening to make that event really great and stuff. But I am working on a sponsorship packet that kind of gives more information that we can use season to season with different tiers that offer different things back to the sponsors for advertising purposes, but also helps us cover some of the costs of these where maybe we can charge less and get even better bands, or, you know, whatever it might be. I'm not sure that I feel comfortable launching it for 2023 as we solicited the sponsorships for the grand opening already. But I'm trying to get that set up so we can at least put it out there in the summer that it will go towards the 2024 season, so that we'll be able to do that. So it's definitely something I've been thinking about and trying to work on pulling together.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. You know, in the first year, you're feeling, you're doing a fantastic job and everything, and I don't know, maybe And I don't know, maybe someone can sponsor, if you can get a few sponsors to, you know, sponsor a free ticket and you put five free tickets and you have a drawing for the free ticket or something.
Yeah, yeah, somewhere in there. Like we'd, we'd like to do some, some tickets like that as well.
Okay. Thank you. This is the point.
Um, I have three, three little questions. First of all, I don't envy your position, the logistics involved with all the things you have to think about with, with launching something like this. I, it would make my head burst. But along that lines, um, Miranda Jennings was here, but was it the last meeting, two meetings ago, for an event at the amphitheater?
Yes.
And the question was raised about how do you control, like people have tickets, but if people are using the trails and coming in or a different section of the park, have, have, have we figured out logistically how that's gonna be addressed?
So we're still working on exactly what that will look like. And I think Ryan has been working about doing some sort of fencing around a specific amphitheater area that can open up when it's not being used for an event and also close up more when there is an event, which will help with some of that. Um, and in terms of like when Miranda is using that, um, we will have signage at the park. Hopefully our front sign has electronic scroll. Hopefully the new sign will advertise it there as well as I'm working with Dawn to put a specific events calendar on the website as a tab next to the original calendar that will post any events that the town is offering as well as ones that may have been permitted through the town. Um, but specifically on there, if the park is ever rented for a private rental, it will be stated on there that the park will be closed to the public during this time for this particular event.
Even for this stuff too, though, like how do you?
Yeah, so for this, um, again, we'll have the signs up. Um, and hopefully all the fencing will work out the way that we're hoping. Um, and we'll be doing wristbands as well and hopefully have some volunteers who will volunteer to kind of be like ushers, walk around, make sure there's no problems, you know, make sure people have their wristband, things like that. Um, it's not foolproof, but it's a start and it's obviously gonna be a big, you know, learning curve as we go.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm sure you thought of like, um, well, the two questions are, people could get tickets at the door as well, I assume?
Yes, so we're, we're working, we just um, agreed to purchase a point of sale machine for the door. So we'll only be accepting credit cards at the door. Um, there will probably be a five dollar additional cost on top of what ticket sales would be in advance, um, which is typical of any, anything like this. Um, but we will allow ticket sales at the door. Um, I really wanna push for pre-sale tickets though. It just makes everything much easier.
And how about refunds?
Um, Justin and I have been talking about that. Um, do you wanna speak to that, what we were talking about, or you want me to?
I think we're still gonna iron that out a little bit.
Yeah.
Just trying to figure out something that's fair to the town that's trying to balance a budget, but also fair to people that, um, you know, if there's like a rain delay or something, how that would work. But we're looking at what other communities typically do and we'll be bringing something forward that's reflective of what's typical in other towns.
Sorry to throw so many at you.
No, it's fine.
All part of the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and I would highlight that five dollar fee is not our fee. It's, it's the fee from the people that run the machine. If that's why you were claiming.
Yeah. Uh, why? Why can't, you know, when I go to like Rieda Ranch or any, a craft show, people get those little things on their phones. They just swipe my card. Why can't we be that simple? And a lot of people have asked me, they're very, I guess annoyed is a good word, when they have to go to the dump and give their address and then swipe their card and it costs them five extra dollars. Why are we not getting whatever that is that they put on their phone?
So we are required to use Unibank.
I'm sorry, say again?
Unibank for.
Who requires?
The town is required?
The town. Yeah.
Who requires us? I wanna know.
Well, that's who the town uses and that's who the treasurer's office says we're required to use. So therefore Unibank has additional fees and more things than some other banks sometimes. So that's why.
Well, that's an, and now Mr. Town Manager, who requires us to use?
Sure. So, so once again, I would say it's, it's reflective of the banking system. So if we were like one small individual making crafts, the, the bank, and nothing against people that craft, I love crafting. Um, but, but the bank's not gonna be hitting them for a charge, but we're an entire municipality. Um, and so they treat us a little differently. We can look into, um, seeing if there's anywhere that has lower costs. But I mean, every municipal, literally every municipality I've ever worked in, um, had a, a fee for using a card. And every single resident was mad at the town when really it was the provider, um, the servicer that's charging the fee. So it's, I experienced that, you know, here, Kingsborough and Watertown.
I know, Pittsburgh doesn't.
Well, I think one way or the other, um, in a previous reincarnation, I worked at a company and my, one of my jobs was integrating credit card processing into point of sale systems. And every blessed processor or bank gets their fee. The question is, who absorbs that fee? Whether it's passed on to the individual, the buyer, or does the store absorb that fee? I don't know if you'll find anyone out there who takes credit card or those sorts of processes at no fee. We can certainly look, but I don't think you're gonna find, because that's how they make their money.
I think the, the, the craft fair people, they don't charge anything.
But they probably absorb the fee in the cost of their product.
I don't think that there's a cost. There's an upfront cost to get that little gadget on their phone.
But after they reach a certain amount of sales, there is a fee associated with it. It's usually one percent.
My husband was always charged like three percent when he had that on his phone.
Yeah.
Which is the same.
Charged?
Three percent. Yeah.
So.
I mean, I think the fees can vary, but there always is a, somewhere there's a fee.
That's how they get their money.
We, we'll look up the specific statute and email it to the board so you, you have it as backup. But I assure you, we're not getting rich off that. Um, and well.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, why are we using this particular system?
Right.
That's my question. And it's been asked at the transfer station as well. It's not just you.
No, I understand.
It's, I mean.
You know, and I'm like, why are we doing this?
There's a cost for those companies to service those items too. So I would offer, you know, maybe not for the transfer station, but in this particular instance, you can buy them in advance. So just buy them in advance and you can avoid the fee. Buy them tonight.
Or when you do it online.
Tonight.
Well, I do wanna know.
Credit card doesn't make a difference when they buy it. There's gonna be a fee.
Is there a fee online?
There is a fee online, but it's, it's actually quite a bit cheaper. The fee is less. Yeah.
Not a five dollar.
You buy them ahead of time online. The fee is much less.
And that fee's being passed on to the purchaser?
It's, it's passed on to the purchaser. Yes.
Yeah.
But it annoys people and I'm just saying.
Understand.
That, that we really should try to do something, especially if you're paying twenty dollar ticket and you get a five dollar fee on top of that instead of maybe a three percent fee. That's, that's a big difference.
Yeah, and I mean, five dollars was like an average based on ticket cost, what I was given. It's like up to a certain percentage. It's like so much. And I see exactly what it is, but it's about five dollars.
Right, yeah. Okay. But maybe put that on an agenda for a further chew over or something. See, see, see what you can come up with.
We're getting a weather update from this guy.
Y'all hear it, Brian.
Don't be that guy.
Anything further for?
I do. I have two more questions. And since you brought up the fencing, now I'm gonna question, who's going to pay for the fencing?
I think whatever the cost is, is built into the cost for the amphitheater. What's already been.
So you're assuming that's coming from Grant?
Is that correct?
The Robbins and Rodhurst Foundation.
Okay. And then the other thing is police detail. Who's paying for that?
Uh, we are, again, part of the cost of tickets includes any other fees that we also have to pay. So we have to pay the band, we have to pay for the police detail. Um, there may be additional uh, costs for DPW that's not accounted for in terms of overtime or stuff that we may have to kind of feed back into based on if the event required like excessive additional, you know.
And that was kinda leading up to my next question because if it were maybe one of a rowdier things, um, and we needed additional police onsite. And, and it becomes, you know how we had like that fee at our dispensaries before about um, community cost, the cost of the community? What if this becomes that? Are you following me?
Like which should we have a community, community impact fee sort of idea attached to it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, just in case, cause you don't know, you know, because you're gonna have alcohol. We may have to call in the paddy wagon. We, we don't, you know, this, these reminiscences or whatever, you know, they could be a wild bunch. I don't know, but we should be planning.
Yeah, so I, I, I think a lot of this first year, um, we're gonna be feeling out a lot of things and we're gonna be taking a lot of feedback from the community. Um, I'm sure we'll be hearing from a butters. Um, and you know, we're, we're trying to figure this out a little bit as we go along. So we can do our research, which we have been doing. We've been looking at what other communities do. Um, but we do encourage the feed, the feedback, um, from the community as always so that we can create a better experience for the town. Um, I think that's a big piece of it. And when it, when it comes down to the financial end of things, I understand there was some frustration from some people, um, online in particular, but the o, the other end of it is that there's a cost to operating this and, you know, we have made a commitment that the amphitheater would not cost the taxpayers, um, you know, directly through taxes. And so there needs to be a way to try to mitigate that cost. So when, when we start listing these things, um, you know, at first glance, it may not seem like they're significant expenses, but the electricity, um, you start listing things like police detail, emptying the porta potties, emptying the trash, um, running the event, coordinating the event, there are expenses that are incurred by this. Um, so just encouraging the community to be mindful.
Right. And, and the other, the other part of that, it's always great to, you know, see how it goes and if we have to adjust and change as we go, that's great. But it's always better to be proactive and anticipate, you know, what would we do in this particular scenario?
Yep.
Because, you know, some of those groups might be wild. We get bears in those woods. I don't know. We got stuff going on.
Yeah, really. Uh, Mr. Ward?
Just a quick question. I, I think you said twenty dollars on average for a ticket, twenty-five if you get it late or at the door. Did you mention any provisions for families?
Um, I did not set up provisions for families in this.
Because what's, what's probably gonna turn off a lot of folks that have two or three kids and they wanna, I know they can go to Gar Park and it's free. And, and that's what's nice about Gar Park. It is free and you can run around and the kids can enjoy the park. But if I'm, if I've got a family, and maybe they're, you know, fifteen year olds or twelve year olds, twenty dollars each becomes quite costly when you have two or three children. So you may be able to figure this out the first year by the attendance. If you don't need a family rate and you're still packing the place, fine. But you may find you're going to have to do that. Uh, I like the idea that this is a, covers all types of music and I'm sure that was on purpose to see what appeals to the town. And I'm sure next year, some of those may not be on because nobody goes to this type of music, but they all go to this type and you may put more of those in there. I, I think the important thing is to secure that area because if I go in there and I spend twenty dollars and I see a lot of people running around without bracelets and they're in the area, I am not going to be happy. And you're going to have a lot of disgruntled people if those people come up the hiking trails and get in.
Yep.
So you definitely, you either have to have it fenced in or you're gonna have to have some tough people there to move people out.
I agree with that. And in terms of the family, um, I had tossed around like a child, either a child rate or, or something like that. Um, and solidified it yet because the cost of tickets are also based on, you know, if we sell all the tickets, which it's a limited amount of seating. So then it was hard to be like, well, what if one concert ends up and it's like a hundred children, I let them all in for free, you know? So I, I've been thinking about it, but I'm just not sure what's gonna work yet. And so we hadn't offered anything separate.
You could bring a baby in free.
Yes, a baby.
In a carrier, in a carrier.
My other thought was it's seven to ten at night and I have four children myself and I would not be bringing my children to an event that goes that late. So I mean, not that some people might, but I thought that that also might deter some of, um, some people bringing their children and kind of like mitigate the issue of having the child and family rate. Um, but it's definitely something to think about and that I have been tossing around. I just am not sure what the answer is yet. Um, as well as some of these bands, um, a few of them were recommended. I had a survey out a few months ago of things people would like to see. So I pulled some from there. Um, and yes, I tried to get a good variety, um, so that it appeals to everybody. It wasn't just like all rock and roll or all country music. Um, but I did take, um, recommendations from people and if it was something that popped up a few times on those surveys, then I knew it was something that interested people who were definitely interested in this because they took my survey too. So I actually had somebody come in my office today and be like, I can't believe you got them. I, they recommended them and they were so excited. And I was like, oh, I'm glad.
And so just to give me an idea and probably give the public an idea, because they're going to contrast Gar Park and this, and why are we spending twenty dollars when it's free at the other park? So I'm, I'm guessing it's because of the level of the performers. They're a lot more expensive than the ones you pay for at Gar Park?
Um, yeah, so most of these are more expensive, um, by quite a bit, um, than what we can afford at Gar Park. Um, there's a couple obviously on the lower end, but ones that were popular requests, so we made sure to include them. Um, but okay, so the first band on July eighth, um, they're whiskey crossing, they're a country band. They actually, they've toured nationally with Jake Owen and a few other major country artists. Um, and they had a number one, uh, number six uh, radio song, country radio song in twenty twenty-one. So, um, they're a much bigger band. Uh, they cost us a little more. That's why they cost so more for the tickets. Um, and as time goes on, I will be, um, releasing more information about each individual band. Some of them may have links to like one of their music videos or something. So you can kind of get a feel of what they'll be like. Um, uh, the, the oldies band, they do all, like a lot of the national fairs, like the Biggie and stuff and they are contracted with one of the major cruise lines and they play on a lot of the cruise lines, um, for months at a time. So, um, they're a much bigger band as well that I thought would really pull in a good, good group of people.
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
That reminded me of my other question that I forgot about earlier.
Sure.
The three hundred seating, is that like a, a health occupancy limit? Is that just a what, like keisters can fit? What is, what is that number?
It, it's an occupancy thing. So, yeah, so for, there, it's a little, there's a little, a little wiggle room um, in that that's for the actual amphitheater structure itself. But there's obviously areas to the side where people could bring chairs. Um, part of it's also dictated by the available parking a little bit. So there's the, the fifty paved parking spots. Um, but the soccer field is gonna have to be used for overflow as well. So that, that's just kind of a realistic number. You could exceed it, but it, it is kind of a health and safety recommendation.
Thank you.
Um, I have two questions. Is the comedy performance, um,
Adult?
Adult? Thank you.
Yeah, so.
X-rated, but yeah.
So I will recommend that it's probably an eighteen plus kind of deal for the comedy show. Yes.
Okay.
Um, and that will be indicated on the, the flyer specific to that event.
Sure. Okay.
But yeah, I would, I would say it probably would be.
And then I've never, I've never listened to reminiscence. Now, oldies to me.
Yeah.
Uh, is seventies.
Come on, man.
Sixties, yeah.
Fifties.
Any idea what they pay? Fifties? I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, I know that they've also toured with some famous oldies, um, bands too. I'm trying to think who they've played with. Um, the Beach Boys.
I was just gonna say.
Okay.
They played, they played on stage with the Beach Boys and, um, I'm trying to think of the other band there.
They probably played with Chanana.
I'm, you know what? I'm not sure on that thought possibly.
People, oldies is the nineties.
Who's the, who's the ones that wore the purple suits?
Haven't thought of them in forty years.
Commandeers or something like that?
No, maybe that's not it. I don't know. I, I have it in my office, but, um, yeah.
Thank you very much. You've done so much work. Um, anything further? And if there are, is nothing, I want to turn the motion. Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Ward. I'm sorry, Mr. Lusha. He's Mr. Ward, yeah.
Oh, The Temptations, is that? Uh, they, they've also been with them. Yeah. I was like, I know, I know it. It'll come to me.
Lusha Maple Street. Are these all alcohol-free events?
A little closer, please.
Are these all alcohol-free events?
Um, no. So we have a RFP out right now for an alcohol vendor. Um, it'll be our, one that, the same one we use for the whole season. Um, so there will be alcohol served.
So you're gonna have family-friendly events with alcohol?
Yes. That, well, as I said, the comedy show is eighteen plus. Um, but you know, there's plenty of places just as Bull Spits downtown. Um, they serve alcohol, but they're a very friendly, family-friendly environment. They have music.
That's because they're encapsulated. I'm curious about the Winchon and Fest because Winchon and Fest has always been held at the Rod and Gun Club and there's reason for that. They're a rowdy bunch and they all drink. So how are you gonna control and contain that? Plus you're asking people to come to donate to the CAC and at the same time, it's gonna be alcohol consumption. The two don't go together.
Yeah, so they rented that privately, um, and they are required to get their own police de, details and things of that nature. Um, and I'm sure that if the board has. details and things of that nature. And I'm sure that if the board had concerns, they may have addressed them when the entertainment permit went in front of them.
And lastly, can you consume alcohol in a municipal park statewide, not townwide? I mean statewide. Is it allowable? You don't see it at Dunn's Park. You don't see it in Garden at the Memorial Park. You don't see it in any other place. So how are you guys going to get by that?
Well, I will say that if you want to go online, there is a park in acting called Nara Park. It's on bigger.
Go to the bigger general.
It's a bigger scale. It's a bigger scale than our park. They have a beach. They have a park where they host similar events to us. And they also have an amphitheater much bigger than ours. It seats 3,000 people, not 300. And they do serve alcohol at theirs as well. And it's all town-owned as well. So I would assume that there's no state regulation that would.
I'd like to see that looked into.
Yeah, we will. Just to cross the Ts and dot the Is. Mr. Ward?
Yeah, it's a good question. Because when we had the food trucks over at Gar Park, if I remember right, the Bullspit had a setup, but you could only drink in that enclosed area.
Right.
So are you going to have an enclosed area at the amphitheater so people aren't walking outside of that enclosed area?
So we're still looking at exactly where we'll have them set up. But the hope again is that the seating area will be fenced in. So that would be included in that. And then whatever area that the vendor is in, that would be part of that same kind, whether we put them in the fenced area or put them just above, that's also somehow roped off. It definitely will still be, you know, enclosed, just maybe a larger space than what was at the Food Truck Festival.
And you'll have somebody to monitor to make sure nobody leaves that area with that, because then you have no idea who's going to consume it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Good points for thought, yeah.
And I would just want to stress that the reason we're going through the RFP process is that the town is not serving the alcohol. It has to be somebody that has their own alcohol license and their own insurance.
Tips and everything.
Tip-certified and everything else.
That doesn't keep you from liability.
It does.
Okay. Look into it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Luscher.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion. Madam Chair, Mrs. Anderson.
I would make motion to approve the venue for the amphitheater as presented with the understanding that we expect updates as to our questions. We have a lot of questions. I know you don't have the answers and you probably, you know, some of them are probably new. But I would like to keep, before we actually set this off, you know, find out the answers about the alcohol. Let's find out, you know, make sure we're doing everything the proper way. And let's, you know, security, things like that. So I just want to be updated.
Sure. So maybe monthly updates. Every other selectman meeting might be appropriate. I will just confirm that we have looked into the alcohol piece already. And that's determined through Maya, not so much through legal counsel. It's our insurance. So I'll have them write something up and we can bring it to a meeting and air it out so the public can see it. But I assure you, we always do our due diligence, but I'm always happy to share our work, so.
Yeah, I'm not questioning now, but I, you know, when he brought it up, I'm thinking, well, if I get a beer, I want to go sit back on my seat. I don't want to be standing over there where I'm uncomfortable. I want to go back over there.
Yeah, I mean, it would.
There's a lot of little nuances that, that.
Yeah. The only reason we rope off.
We need to muddle through.
Yeah.
First year and everything.
The only reason we rope off an area, like at Gar Park, for example, is because it's not an enclosed area. Or if it's like something at Fall Fest, same thing. You just start wandering out into Central Street. But if the entire amphitheater is enclosed, then that counts. That is an enclosed area. For the same reason, if you've ever seen a concert at any outdoor venue that serves alcohol, you can roam about freely for that reason.
Within the barriers.
Yeah, within the barriers of the venue.
Okay.
But we'll bring something to, so it's not a trust us thing. You can actually, you'll see it.
Can I just say also, as an aside, that it's not Gar Park. It's G-A-R Park. Because it stands for Grand Army of the Republic. And some of the veterans get a little twitchy when we keep saying that up here. It's been told to me.
I've been misstating it, so thank you.
I'm just bringing it out.
I also don't fancy it.
Several times. Yeah, it's G-A-R.
People do say Gar, but it should be G-A-R. All right, thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor. Was it seconded?
Not yet.
I will second it. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no one reporting for us this evening. Moving on to new business. 7.1, just a review of the Town Manager's Contract Extension. We, the board had met February 6th, February 13th, and February 21st to discuss the Town Manager's FY 2024 Contract. The minutes are on the agenda for approval and/or release. So is the board fine with taking this item now before we actually vote on those minutes? We did bring it in open session on Tuesday, so.
I would vote on minutes. I'm not, I'm sorry. I don't think I understood your question.
You're asking, you're asking to take the minutes out of order.
Or I just take the minutes out of order.
So moved.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. So we're going to take three sets of minutes out of order. The first one is 10.3, the executive session minutes of February 6th, 2023.
And we will be releasing these?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Anderson.
I make a motion to approve and release the executive session minutes from February 6th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Executive session minutes of February 13th, 2023. At this executive session, there were two issues discussed, one of which we need to hold because it refers to the litigation. So.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep, yep.
So these minutes would be approved, but not released.
Now, I have a question on that. And I didn't write down the date. I should have. But I looked it up. And we have minutes from last March that we approved some and withheld part of it. And we never released the withheld part. And that's like, it's supposed to be released within six months.
Okay.
Within six months of the resolution of the legal action, is that, was that in regards to the opioid? No? Was it a lawsuit?
No.
Oh, well then, yeah.
It's contractual.
If you find the date or.
I want to say it was like 3/23.
Okay.
It's coming into my head. I was like looking. I'm like, oh.
So maybe Mary, you can look into that and.
Yes, we'll look into it.
Bring that back.
And so when, like, do we have a tickler or something if we release, you know, part of a date of the executive session minutes, but we didn't release the other half?
Yeah, we keep a spreadsheet on it so we can bring it back to the board at an appropriate time, whether it's settled.
But do we?
Yes.
Yep.
I think we just need to fine tune it, but we do have it.
Okay. Okay. So regarding this particular set of minutes, what is the pleasure of the board to, we can approve and hold the entire set of minutes? We can approve, correct me if I'm wrong, approve and release, partial release it?
Well, shouldn't we release, if we're going to be releasing everything due to the Town Manager's contract, if we're going to discuss it, then it should all be released?
I agree with that. But how do we do it?
Withheld that other part.
How do we do it without?
And so how does that work? Is it just redacted?
Yeah. So we would redact anything regarding, is the separate issue the opioid epidemic? Yeah. So just for people watching at home, the lawsuit that was referenced is from the opioid epidemic. Anything regarding my contract, I mean, the only real sticking point is if you're discussing an employee's contract in open session over things that were discussed in executive session. So for what it's worth, I'm willing to publicly forfeit and say everything in there is public. There's nothing to hide there. It was a forthright, up-and-up conversation. So by all means, anything regarding my contract, release it all.
Yeah, I would like to do that. But my question is, what do we do about the other half of it?
The minutes themselves, because they're all together.
Right.
So do we release the whole thing, but redact what we have to hold? Or we have to hold partial?
So there wasn't anything, I think, discussed in the opioid discussion that we had that I think would harm our bargaining position. So I think you're fine releasing all of it flat out.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to be sure there. Okay, so we have the minutes of February 13th.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve and release the executive session, February 13th, 2023, meeting minutes.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have one last set of executive session minutes relating to the issue of the Town Manager's Contract. And that was on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve and release the executive session minutes of February 21st, 2023.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for that. And now going back up on our evening's agenda, we review the Town Manager's Contract. We did meet in multiple sessions. And we have come to an agreement. We have extended the contract for another year. Base, there were four, four points to the contract. His FY 24 base salary, 162.5. Added one year to the contract. Added one week vacation. And an annual $600 stipend for life insurance. And we did note that his base salary for FY 25 would be 170. There was a lot of discussion about the numbers when Mr. Saltback and I first sat down to negotiate after the board made their first counter offer. Both sides recognized that it's, the number is a good size number. The board members took it upon themselves to do some research on our own, looked into area, other area, Town Managers, did our research as to what the ranges are. One thing that we have found, not just in the Town Manager position, but in some of the other higher-up positions that we've been advertising for, specifically lately the Town Accountant, the economic situation is such that salaries are up overall. So we did some negotiating. Mr. Saltback, there was, Mr. Saltback left some money on the table, I guess is the phrase, with a compromised number that we came at. We had done a salary survey. We had a salary survey done recently. And Mr. Saltback asked the board to consider taking that money that was, that was on the table and using it to merit, to provide merit-based raises based on that salary survey to employees of Town Hall. So that is something that we will work on down the road. Anything, does the board, any board member want to add anything to that agenda item?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I just want to point out that talking about this money left on the table, the amount was $7,500, just so folks know.
Thank you. Mrs. Saltback?
Sure. I would just like to reiterate what I said the other night, is how much I value and appreciate the partnership that I have with this board and the work that you all do, but also how much I value and appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of this community and to try to push their initiatives forward. It's very meaningful work to me. It's not always all about the money, while I do have a family. Winchun succeeding is the most important thing to me. And I think it's the most important thing to all the people sitting at this table as well. So I look forward to continuing that work for another few years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. 7.2, accept sponsorships in the amount of $1,700 for the Recreation Department. We've received additional donations, which is fantastic. I don't have the amount. Okay, so that was Central Mass. I'm sorry, could you back up? I wasn't fat. Central Mass Tree and Central Mass Truck and Equipment Repair. Each donated $100 for a total of 200. New England Woodenware Packaging and Display donated $500. Mount Wachusett Community College made a donation of $500. And Millipore Sigma, up in Jeffrey, donated $500. And a huge thank you to all of those, all those businesses that have contributed. Any questions or comments? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Motion to accept the donations totaling $1,700 as presented this evening for the amphitheater, I guess, opening day.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next up, 7.3, Fire Department Design Working Group Discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring this back before the group. So with the official passing of the funding for the design phase of the fire station addition, as I sat down with Chief Smith and the architects working on the project, we had come to the consensus that the decisions surrounding that project shouldn't be exclusive to Chief Smith and me. And that it's very much a community initiative. We want to have community input throughout that process. So we're recommending creating a small working advisory group that would help inform the decisions that we make. And then that group can regularly come back and report any progress on that project back to the Board of Selectmen. So it doesn't necessarily need to be this makeup, but figured we'd give you a starting point, recommending a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Finance Committee, a member of the Winchun Fire Department Union, as well as two citizen seats just at large. I would envision that for the citizen seat, they could write a letter to my office that I could pass on to the Board of Selectmen and you could perhaps select them at an upcoming meeting. I would highlight that while we appreciated diverse background, when we get input from citizens on those seats, it would be useful to have somebody that has some type of experience or background in firefighting, construction, public procurement, or something else that's parallel to the work at hand. So from there, I don't know if the board has any particular input. I did provide a recommended motion. But if you'd like to change the makeup, that'd be fine too. I will highlight that the choice of a five-person panel is deliberate, just because it's difficult to wrangle more than five. But of course, it's at your pleasure.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
The five members are fine to me and two citizens. The only thing I would get away from it, and I'm going to delicately try to explain this, it says the two citizens should have demonstrated background in firefighting, construction, public procurement, and some other experience that would help them provide guidance. I would take off firefighting only because you and the chief. I would take off firefighting, only because you and the chief are primarily involved in this. There's going to be a Winchton Firefighter Union member on this committee, and the only people you're going to find with demonstrated background in firefighting is retired firemen. So if I'm sitting out there, and I'm either for or against this, but if I'm against it, I'm saying already the board's tilted. So I would just say, looking for people with experience in construction, because that's really what we're talking about here, public procurement, or any other information that might be helpful, because as soon as you say background in firefighting, you've eliminated the vast majority of the citizens in the town. Other than that, I'm fine with it.
I agree with that, great catch, per usual, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anything else from the board? Would we have anyone interested in filling the position representing the Board of Selectmen?
Don't all jump up at once, guys.
I don't have a construction background.
I gave my time.
I can, I'm not sure I'm the best suited, but I can and I'm willing.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I motion to form a five-person working group as discussed with the Finance Committee to appoint their representative, the town manager to advertise for the two citizen seats to be selected by the Board of Selectmen at a future meeting, the Winchton Fire Department Union to select their representative, and for Danielle to be selected as a representative for the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next up, we have the draft warrant for our March 13th meeting. Mrs. Saltback?
Thank you, Madam Chair, specifically the motions book. So as you make your way through, typically you all assign who you feel on the board should read one or the other. I did start off on the first one with Chair Tom Kane, although it's my understanding that it's their intention to pass over Article 1. For the second, a nine-tenths vote is required for prior year's bills, I don't know if anybody would like to volunteer for that, exciting one.
I will, that's the shortest one.
Smart move. For Article 3, I'd actually put Selectwoman Anderson.
Oh, I'll do three.
Because you're on the
I didn't even notice that when I was reading.
Communications Committee. Would somebody else like to volunteer for two?
How about Amy? Amy won't be there, she can't make it?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
All right, no problem.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Rick. So two is Rick, three is Barbara.
Article 4, I have the Rec Commission Chair, Deborah Bradley.
Okay.
She'll know. Could you communicate that to her, please? Thank you. The Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee, the chair is Mr. Romanowski, so you're all getting off easy on this time around for Article 5. And Article 6, for the Whitney Pond Dam.
I'll do that one.
Okay. And that will round it off, so I will note that this has been forwarded to legal counsel, it is in draft form, they will be reviewing it, and I will have definitive copy back to all of you, I'd say by Thursday evening, if I know you like to take your notes, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Just a question again on Article 6, because when that one gets explained, talking about, do we want to get the water at the historic high level, or keep it at the lower cost at the low level, they're going to ask, what is the, the, how much difference are we talking about between the highest level and lowest level with regards to cost? I know we can't get specific, but just ballpark, are we talking an extra million dollars?
Sure, so to Mr. Krodo's credit, he has been working with the engineer on this, and he did get a figure from them later this afternoon, if you'd like to share that.
So, there's a vast difference in costs, so you're talking about 10 million to raise the water, and you're talking probably, what is it, about 6 million just to do the normal?
6 million, did you say, for the normal?
Yep.
I don't really want to talk about that at all.
And what's the benefit of raising the water, and what's the benefit of keeping it as is?
That's what we'd have to have.
So there is a habitat benefit to the higher water levels, there's people that talk about the herons that used to nest there, they're no longer there anymore. It does create a deeper pool of water, so it's better for fish habitat, because it keeps the water cooler longer, shallow water tends to get warmer faster, you get fish kills. It would cover the stump, so aesthetically, it's more pleasing. There's a couple different reasons, and to add another wrinkle, in the redevelopment authority meeting earlier this evening, one of the members, Mr. Connors, raised the question of whether or not hydroelectric is even something that's feasible there anymore. So to add that, Mr. Krodo, to your pile, could you ask the engineers if hydroelectric is something that's feasible, so we could actually generate electricity in that process?
We can add that.
And it very well, it very well may not be, but I guarantee he's probably not the only person that's wondering, so we'll get a determination on that as well.
Would it be possible to get an artist rendering of what it would look like at the higher level? Take a picture as it is now, and have someone go in and Photoshop it or something.
Can you pull the email up?
It used to be higher.
Or even an old photo.
No, not at the moment. We could get historic aerials that actually might be able to show you the more expanded, because there are areas, especially the more shallow areas, where, you know, a foot difference in depth could mean an additional five to 10 or 15 feet in terms of water coming out on the shore in some areas. We can see if we can find something that will illustrate that a little bit.
You're talking three feet at the dam.
Okay.
So you're going to figure three feet, and then as that comes up and it pushes out, it's going to push farther towards Ingleside and up towards
I just remember going over the bridge on Glen Allen, and there was water on both sides, and then there wasn't.
So when you're going over Glen Allen Street Bridge, and you see the sand mounds that are there now on both sides, you don't see any of that?
Right.
That would all be covered.
I remember that.
That is correct.
I wonder if that would also, if we, in the end, if we do raise the level, would the state stock it, fishing?
I don't know the answer to that, but that's a great question.
Yeah, make it a recreational area for fishermen, whatever.
That is one thing that's highlighted, I think, in the downtown revitalization plan, but also the master plan, that our bodies of waters are one of our greatest, from an economic standpoint, one of our greatest existing assets is the bodies of water that this community has at its disposal. And the recreation opportunities for that, including fishing, I think would fall within the same category.
Okay. So yeah, we got our work cut out for that article.
And that's it.
Yes, Mr. Ward.
I just have one more, because I know this is a non-binding referendum, which basically means, this is just giving us direction on what way to look, but when I look at the explanation, it says, "A vote in the affirmative would recommend the restoration of water to be to historic levels at a higher expense. A vote in the negative would, you're basically recommending that it be at the lower cost." Somebody's going to read that, hear that, and think, we're actually voting tonight on approving this high cost.
The only, the only thing, Mr. Ward, that we're voting on is to allow the engineers to finish the design, so there's no extra cost in the design, whether we decide to go with the high level or the low level, the design is the
And that's already being taken care of.
That's all we're voting on, is what, what direction we need to focus on.
All right, so that has to be in here, does it talk about?
That should be in there, it's just the design.
I'll think of a line to add in there that will communicate, I think, what you're trying to get.
They'll hear those last few sentences in that explanation.
Yeah, they'll be looking through. Okay, that's a good point. Anything else on this article? Hearing and seeing none, moving on, Old Business Water Main Transmission Line Update. Mr. Saltback?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I just wanted to provide this board, but as well as the public, an update on this issue, I've heard a couple rumors swirling throughout town about this and several other issues, I was crusading on Facebook over the weekend. For this particular item, though, what really spurred the scare in the community was a somewhat false headline from the Gardner News that we hadn't received funding, so I just wanted to give everybody an update on what we've been working on since that vote went through at your October 24th special town meeting. So as a reminder, that vote at the October 24th special town meeting was to authorize us effectively to go out and apply to the Mass Clean Water Trust, with the understanding that we would come back later with some type of definitive blending funding strategy. We never released any figures that determined what that cost would be per household, it's something that's still be, to be determined. Late in December of 2022, the state did release a preliminary draft plan, their 2023 Intended Use Plan for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, I did attach that in its entirety, it's a public document that was released. In that draft report, they funded 38 projects, 77 were not, they fell below the funding line, and our project was about 18 deep in those 77 on the funding line. So in response to that, we, you know, in so many words, circled the wagons, we did reach out to Congresswoman Dr. Hand's office, DPW Director Krodo and I went down to her office in Lowell personally to speak with her staff, and she did pen this letter on our behalf, which is also attached in your packet, encouraging Mass DEP to please reconsider where they're at in the draft. Additionally, it's worth highlighting that a January 19th public hearing was held to get input on that draft plan, three communities participated, including Winchton, and the other two communities had one representative. We were the only community to have our town manager, DPW director, two members of an engineering firm, as well as three members from our state House delegation, Representatives Lotnick, Representative Whipps, and Senator Commerford, there to advocate on behalf of the community. So no determination has been made yet, we're still waiting and seeing, I have had some good conversations with Representatives Lotnick as early as, or as recent as late last week, that they're actively advocating for us on the state level. So in short, just to communicate to the community, no decision has been made yet, and our team is very much fighting like hell to try to bring money in for this town for that particular initiative. So once we find out what's going to happen with the Clean Water Trust, we'll be able to have a clear direction moving forward. Hopefully, we're funded, if we're not funded, we'll find another way, but it's, you know, the water line's failing one way or another, so we'll find something to make it work.
Thank you, questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I just wanted to add that, you know, obviously, we're still in the process, and we haven't been ruled out, but I don't know, when I was reading some of those posts on Facebook, I think, I think it's disingenuous to say, well, it was, you know, the Gardner News lied, or it was a misleading headline, because headlines are really created to make people pick the paper up and buy the paper. And the story itself was pretty accurate, it was just the headline, and that's, you know, always, and I bet they sold papers, and that's their job, is to sell the paper. So whether or not you liked the headline, people picked it up, it worked.
Sure, and I
And it did, and then if you read the story, though, it did say it was, it wasn't conclusive, and
Right, I would say the biggest two issues for me, one is that the headline wasn't, the story wasn't publicly available, it was behind a paywall, and so it needlessly scared people, and we're always talking about, you know, how much things cost, right, escalating costs. So to make a claim that's disingenuous in their headline, and then make you pay to get to see what the real news is, I think is a little disingenuous. I think the other piece is, particularly on social media, there were some individuals flat out questioning whether or not the town manager was doing their job, and I assure you I am, so that was the second piece that I didn't particularly appreciate.
But, you know, they got families too, they got to provide for their families, that's how you sell newspapers. It's just how it's done.
Sensationalism.
And, you know, it's unfortunate that it didn't, people got scared and didn't want to buy, buy the paper, and, but that's what they got to do to sell papers.
So I guess, as always, the moral of the story here is, if you see a rumor, please reach out, and we will, we will set it straight for you, but don't believe everything you read on social media.
Or in the newspaper.
Yeah, or the newspaper.
Well, you got to read the story, not stick with the headline, not really.
Not just skim the headlines. Anything further on this issue? All right, moving on to the town manager's report, Mr. Saltback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a few items to cover this evening, cherry sheet estimates were officially released late last Thursday from the governor's office, so we've been digging through those. Department budgets are nearing completion with final numbers on track for the March 14th presentation of the draft budget, and that is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, as a reminder, it's on a Tuesday. On the personnel side of things, we've held interviews for the Assistant Treasurer/Collector role, and the successful candidate will be announced shortly, I anticipate they'd be starting sometime in late March or early April. On the project side of things, the library is moving along, and they have started the process of closing up walls and ceilings, and we are on budget to date, thank you, by the way, to Mr. Krodo, who's been keeping a very close eye on that. Bids came in high for soil remediation at Four Summer Drive, and I'm working with our licensed site professional in an effort to secure additional funding from Mass Works, or excuse me, Mass Development, it should read, it'd be roughly about $100,000 gap there. If we can't get additional funds, we'll do a little bit of scope reduction, so we'll find a way to make that work, but it's going to stay on schedule. Bid documents are close to finalized for Phase 1 repairs for the old Murdoch, I had a meeting with the architects and the OPM today, and they're going to have a draft at that March 14th meeting, the architect's going to come up here in person and sit down with everybody, so I don't think you've had to date an opportunity to meet him in person. He'll explain the scope of work they're looking to do for Phase 1, and we're on track to have that out to bid in March. The bids for the cleanup work down at Beach Street, removal of the oil drums and the hydraulic lifts down there have come back in, and the cleanup is scheduled, actually officially for this Wednesday, 8:00 a.m., so if you see people in bunny suits removing oil barrels down by the water, those are our people.
Everybody's going to freak out.
Yep, yep, so just a heads up. And then a meeting was held with MassDOT to review the current phase of the Blair Square design, and representatives from the state are going to be joining us next week, actually, I believe, for a site visit to walk the intersection. We've had a couple interactions with MassDOT where it seems like they don't particularly appreciate how difficult that intersection is, because they're looking at it from the sky, but the height change is such a significant element of that, so after much begging from Brian and I, they're going to come out in person and actually see that what they're describing isn't really practical for that area, so that should be interesting. On the miscellaneous side of things, just a reminder to the community, that special town meeting is coming up on Monday, March 13th, at 7:00 in the evening at the Murdoch High School, and a meeting has been scheduled in April with the North Central Chamber of Commerce to discuss future plans for the RHI building and other underutilized downtown structures, I did see that somebody blew the dust off an old Facebook post from six or seven years ago about a plan down there, so I want to make sure people know that we are trying to move the needle on that building as well, we haven't forgotten about it.
Perfect. I think that the guys from Mass DOT to look at Blair Square, they ought to come when the approach, up Route 12, is snowy, and really look at how it's going and really look at how it's going to be for vehicles and tractors to have to maybe stop there and get started and take, take that into account as well. So maybe later this week could be a really good time for them to come out.
Yeah.
Considering we're going to get, how much, what are they saying now, Brian? Total? Okay.
And maybe if they come at 5:00, when all the traffic's coming through.
Absolutely. Make, make sure they, they're here at less hour.
It, it's chaos. They, they, I mean, one, one thing, not to dig into it too deeply, but they keep trying to move the crosswalk, for example, closer to the mouth of Blair Square on Central Street. And I keep encouraging them to push it, hold it back a little bit, so it's more so like where the opening of Cumberland Farms is across the Dunkin' Donuts, because that's where I cross on foot almost every morning to get my, my caffeine fix. And I'm trying to explain to them that nobody in their right mind would walk directly adjacent to that intersection because somebody's going to come up that hill around La Pointe Law now and just absolutely launch you if you're on foot. So they'll come out and they'll see it, hopefully.
There hasn't been one day there that I haven't heard horns blaring at least four different times.
Blair Square?
Yeah.
Maybe that's why they call it Blair Square?
Yep, there it is.
Oh, get it.
Anything further on the town manager's report?
Uh, that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have a couple minutes, sets of minutes left. The first is Monday, February 6th, our regular meeting. I'll have a moment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I just, after going over these, these minutes, I'm very disappointed because of the lack of detail in them. And, and so I just, I didn't want to pick on anyone in particular, but I'll show you for instances so I can address it all. On the February 6th minutes, when Sulcman Ward had concerns about the article on the CPA, I, I, I would have liked to have seen those listed. A lot of them were, were addressed and I know, I know that. But I like to go back and look at them and say, did, did we cover that? Should there be problems down the road? And it's always, that's how I go back and I check, is I go back to the minutes and I look. And then when it just says he has concerns, I don't remember what his concerns were. He had a whole list of them and they were good concerns. But they're not in the minutes and I, and I really want them in writing. Because at some point, we don't know, you know, we've already had problems and, and, you know, we don't want to lose our video, but what if the video's not available? And if we had it in, in written print, you know, especially concerns, and that's always been my issue with the minutes. When somebody has a concern, we have to notate that, so we can go back and check and make sure it was addressed.
So what I would offer as a solution at that time, and, and to Deb's credit, I think she's done an excellent job in walking the line between the, the push and pull of the minutes are too long and the minutes are too short.
These are really short, though.
Moderate, maybe moderately so. What I would recommend is when the time comes to approve the minutes on a one-off basis, please feel free to add something in and we can amend it on the fly. But it, but it's a hard line to walk and I think our staff are doing a good job, but we can be mindful of that.
Well, no, it, it's just in general, and I know we've had this discussion before about briefing them up. And I, I have some very serious concerns and I, I just want to, you know, like zip down, you know, on, on 213, my concern was, of course, regarding security up at the park. And, um, and I, you know, I, I want that noted so that I can go back and, and reflect and say, did, did we address that concern? Because, you know, at, at this point, no, we haven't, working on it. But it, you know, those are things that I have to keep on my ticker. And, and yes, I do look up old minutes to check.
So, so what I, what I would offer, better yet, is if, if you could email, because we release them in advance, and if you could email additions that you would like to see, we'd be happy to accommodate them, you know, within reason, obviously. So maybe that's a good middle ground there.
I don't know. I think, you know, usually what we want is more detail, that, that somebody can look up the minutes and say, yeah, they addressed that. No, they didn't address that. On, on 123, both Amy and I were absent that day. Sound was terrible on the video. And going back to check the minutes, and I checked the video and there's a lot of places where you can't hear it, even on the uploaded one. So it really doesn't do me any good and there's no words in the minutes. And, you know, that's a concern. So I, I think, you know, just in general, with every, every set of minutes, I was like, you know, we need, we need more. You know, we don't need the, the fluff, but we do need, you know, points, points of order or concerns. You know, the major, major items need to be put in those minutes.
We, we can take that under advisement and then if there's anything, like I said, you want to add, just reach out to Deb directly, if that's okay with you, Deb?
Yeah, I mean, and, and I know, I do know what you're saying and, and it's a conversation, you're right, that we have had in the past. I do understand about if someone has, you know, three, three issues that they want to make sure are covered under, you know, maybe bullet point them in the minutes with something so that they're mentioned without getting into a lot of detail, unless it was a resolution or something. But, um, yeah, it, they're definitely an ongoing, it's an ongoing process to.
It, it is. And I, and I know that. And I know that, you know, sometimes, you know, when, when we're doing our work, hindsight is always 20/20, but when, when a new concern comes up and I go, wow, didn't Rick Ward say something about that? And then I'll go back to look and I want to see what he said, because it's happened more than once.
Okay, so we'll keep working on.
You know, and, and I really, I don't know, it's a tool for us that we use and whether, you know, I think sometimes the, the residency is not probably as often as we do, but I need that tool.
All right. So we'll keep working on them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree that, that the more detail, the better, just for historical purposes. But something that worked well for us when I was on the school committee is they, the, the minutes were released, you know, to us a number of days before the meeting. And if we had any feedback, we would email and revise that would be sent, you know, shortly before the meeting so that we could just vote on the revised set rather than kind of hash it out.
Well, you know, the problem with that, and I, I don't want to sound like a jerk, but I'm gonna, because I'm just going to say it. Anytime that I've done that before, and, and Deb, not with you, so don't. But when I, when I brought up issues and said, well, then you type it the way you want it. No, it's not my job, man. You know what? I don't want to, because I only have two days, basically, because it's Thursday night to Sunday. And I don't, I don't really want to spend my weekend watching the video and taking the notes the way I want them.
Yeah, so I'd say.
Is that a pain in the neck statement?
Bordering on it, so.
I'm sorry, I had to say it.
So, I mean, it's, you know, I'm trying to, to pick the words on it, but, I mean, with previous administrative staff, that's been like one of the largest stressors of their role. And I think the hard part is just telling them that you want more, but not specifying of what. You know, I've, I've watched it ruin multiple previous administrative staff's day, ju-just trying to guess what it is and then they feel like they're in a position where they're trying to chase any given member of the board to find out what it is they specifically want and they don't hear back. So, and I don't mean that as a dig, I'm just saying like it's, it creates a stress for them.
I'm, I'm like thinking going, well, because I think I'm clear. You know, that I want concerns. When somebody raises concerns, that's my biggest thing, is to say, somebody raised that concern, I can't remember. And I have to go back and look.
So I think maybe even the first few times is, is a courtesy, if you can maybe spell it out for them more directly, to give them an example of the type of stuff you're looking for and then maybe they'll pick up, you know, a little bit more as time goes on. But, I mean, and Deb, feel free to speak up, but I think it's, having that direction is sometimes invaluable because otherwise you're guessing what, you know, the other people want in the room and it's a, that's a tough, that's a tough role, so.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I agree that more is always better. Being sort of a historian, I like seeing the history. But I will give credit to Mary and Linda and Deb, because they know that, they get an email from me every time there's minutes up for a gen, on the agenda. And I send it out and I, I'm very detailed in my response. Yes, it takes time. I do have the time. And I do send an email every time saying, this should be, this is what's in doubt in parentheses and it should read, and I give the exact wording that it should say, particularly when it's stuff dealing with me.
Right.
Because I know what I said.
Right, yeah, yeah. It's easier that way.
And, and so I give them credit because they always make the changes that I recommend. Now, it does take time and it'd be nice if we get them a little earlier than, sometimes it's Friday and sometimes it's Thursday. But, but they always respond and I, I always get things corrected if I see them wrong.
Okay, good. Okay. So we've got these minutes before us as they are this evening. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm sorry, which date are we on? February 6th?
I'm sorry, February 6th. I should have specified, yes.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Lapointe?
I'd make the motion to approve the minutes as provided for Monday, February 6th.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I don't know about now, because I want to, I want to see Mr. Ward's concerns again, without watching the video.
Next up, we have the, um, Monday, February 13th minutes, which was the Quad Board with the Finance Committee, Capital Planning and the Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move to approve the Quad Meeting with FinCom, Cap, Capital Planning and CPAEC meeting minutes from Monday, February 13th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. And our last set is Monday, January 23rd, 2023, our regular meeting.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the regular meeting boss minutes of Monday, January 23rd, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
Abstention? Okay, thank you. One. All right. No communication, no executive session. Our next meeting will be two weeks from tonight. Are we going to post a meeting prior to the special town meeting? I mean, a meeting for the BOs that evening?
Can we not? Because we have a meeting the next day, don't we?
We do.
Oh, yeah, that's true. What's the difference in a day? Yeah, unless there's, I'll let you, if there's something that's like critically timed.
That has to be done, okay.
I'll let you know.
All right. So we will hopefully see a lot of you at the meeting on March 13th. And then we're, at the moment, we're up on the March 14th.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, 8:13.